You don't care, I don't have to do it six. Okay. I think with no further business, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Meeting agenda on March 26, 2018. Please join Councilmember Stip in the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, so rule and govern our hearts and minds that we may be stirred up to holiness of living here and dwell with you in perfect joy hereafter. Be with us tonight as we work to govern and serve the needs of our city. We pray for the men and women serving our city, state, and nation, and ask that you protect and be with them in all that they do. We thank you, God, for your presence, your power, and your peace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Stip. All right, let's go to communications tonight. We have three items. We'll start with the first one is an item with West Valley Arts Council. Director Bernadette Carroll will share exciting information about the fifth annual Lakeside Music Fest being held on April 7, the 28 theme at the Australia Lakeside Amphitheater. And Guileen, our arts and culture coordinator, will do the introduction. Guileen?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are very excited to be in front of you this evening to share information about the Goodyear Lakeside Music Fest. With me tonight is Bernadette Carroll. She is the director of the West Valley Arts Council, and she has lots of great information to share.
Welcome.
Hello, and thank you for having me, and thank you for, Guileen, for putting this together for me because we have a big fundraiser on Friday, so we decided to put all of our events in the same week and just call it a day. Let's see. So, many of you have been to the festival. This is our fifth year, and it's been growing every year. Last year, we calculated about 7,500 people coming throughout the day. And it definitely, it starts off slow because of the heat, but it definitely grows throughout the day, and as the bands probably get louder and louder as well. But we are so proud of this partnership that we have with you all. We've had this relationship for over 20 years, you know, dating back to when we brought the symphony and our relationship with Newland, our private partner, and a nonprofit. All the three of us together, I think we do a great job putting an event together. So these are some great shots of previous festivals that we've had over the past five years, previous performers. It's definitely very family-friendly. We have a great kid zone. This year, we're going to be doing an instrument petting zoo with Australia Foothills Band students. We're going to be having an art component, face painting, Lego, race car building, a little bit of everything this year to, we're going to amplify that for sure. Some more great shots. The event is on April 7. It goes from noon to nine, and it's non-stop music. We have two stages. We have the Drumming Circle. Last year, I believe, a lot of the fire and PD were enjoying the Drumming Circle along with the kids, which is really great. And we do the Mayor's Select Awards, so that'll be right before some of our bands later on in the afternoon take the stage. So that's a great opportunity for the city of Goodyear to highlight all the great visual artists that are in their city. And we have, we don't have Alice Cooper this year. He came a couple of years ago. That is, you know, just a cardboard. I could bring that, for sure. But this is a mariachi band that will be highlighted at the festival. They won the 2017 Proof is in the Pudding. It'll be the first time we have a mariachi band. Some more great shots. Okay, I'm going to go over with you real quick the lineup, just so you know what we've got going on. The Carnavaleros are a, I almost said ukulele, a zydeco band. Guileen has been wanting zydeco for a very long time, and we're proud to bring this band from Tucson. The whole spirit of this festival is all about highlighting great Arizona bands and highlighting genres that we haven't had in previous years. So every year, it's a stretch to figure out what we should add, what we should bring to the table. Three Hole Salt is actually a local band. It's the retired deputy director of the Goodyear Fire Department, Mike Almond's band. So he's going to be on the side stage. The Walkins are a great top 40 band. They've been featured in Best of Phoenix, and they have opened for a lot of local bands, such as the Gin Blossoms. The Spirited Lads are a great Irish pub band, and we haven't had Irish music in a couple of years. We thought we'd bring it back. The Mariachi Juvenal de Mitierra is the band that I mentioned previously that won the 2017 Proof is in the Pudding. And then we have a Tex-Mex band, which we've never had before, so that will be a good addition to our lineup. I'm very excited about Dennis Rowland and Diana Lee. Dennis Rowland is an Arizona jazz legend. Last week, I was at the Governor's Arts Awards, and he won Artist of the Year. And he had a stroke in 2013, and he stumbles over his words a little bit when he talks, but when he sings, it's just a whole different story. And Diana Lee will be there with him. He has opened, he has played with Count Basie Orchestra. He's played with Ella Fitzgerald and all these other wonderful jazz and blues legends. He's been around for a very long time. And Diana Lee has played with Diana Ross. She's opened for Sister Sledge and other great musicians like that. Final Station is the first time we've had an indie rock band, I believe. They toured the country with Rob Thomas for many, I think, almost 76 concerts, from what I remember. Undecided Youth is a 70s rock band. They're actually a local, and I think one of the students was one of your students at one point at Westar. Westar? Yes, Westar Elementary. So we're excited to have a local young band coming out of, you know, some of the musicians are from Goodyear. Sarah Robinson is a blues great. She's young, but she just has a great, authentic blues voice. Three Nations, actually, the lead musician there is a ukulele player, and he's, I think he's about 16 years old now, maybe a little bit older. But they call him Junior Bruno Mars because he just has that vibe, and he's inspired by Bruno Mars. And then The Steaks is the final band. They're a hip-hop soul band. And let me just read something that I found about them. The Steaks have brought soul to Arizona's hip-hop scene. They are the winner of the Phoenix New Times 2017 Battle of Bands, and they've garnered acclaim from Arizona's top music publications. It's definitely a new sound that we haven't brought to the music fest before, but it's one that we are bringing this year. So there it is. Join the fun, April 7, noon to nine, non-stop music. We have a VIP tent for those of you that would like to join us on council and staff, and beer and garden, and all kinds of good stuff. So that's about it in a nutshell.
Wow. Let me turn it over to council here. Any comments, any questions you have, Councilmember Stip?
Well, just, I'm going to be out of town, so I'm going to miss it once again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's not a problem. But I know there's a lot of excitement always, always about it. As a matter of fact, I was talking to my neighbors yesterday, and they said, hey, what's going on with that thing that happens up by the lake? And I said, oh, it's coming up here in a couple of weeks. Check it out. So there, even as far north as where I live, there's still
Great.
folks that are talking about it.
Good.
So really appreciate everything that you guys do, and obviously the work that Guileen and the rest of the gang
Yeah, it's a true partnership. It really is.
So thank you very much for that, and unfortunately, I'm going to miss it, but
Okay, maybe next year. Thanks.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Well, I do live up there, and it's just absolutely wonderful because you just see so many people, your neighbors, your friends, who just walk in and, you know, can watch it, and it's so easy to get to. And then so many people come up and enjoy just the atmosphere from other cities, not just Goodyear. We have people coming from other cities that we were talking, somebody from Scottsdale, I think, last time we were talking to and everything. So it's just a fun event, and if anybody hasn't gone, it's great. You just kick back. You have, going to have the food trucks and stuff?
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, you grab food, the kids grab food, run around. It's so wonderful. So although I really did enjoy the symphony, I have to say, as a family event, that the whole family, all ages, people bring their little kids, teens, you know, everything, that this is so much more fun, and it's just so inclusive. So thank you.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, I agree. It's definitely a great cultural, cultural event that brings the community together. I was there last year, brought my kids. They love the Lego building and the tracks and the food trucks and the music. And as I said, it's a great family event, a lot of people from other parts of the state and the community come out. So yeah, definitely a great thing, and I'd like, I look forward to it every year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you have quite a cast this year of singers.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, we're excited.
So I guess we need to go earlier.
Yeah.
So if you have a tent, we can hang out in it.
Yes, lots of shade, believe me.
Yeah, well, we're looking forward to it, and thank you so much. You're doing a great job with this.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
And I know the residents up there appreciate it, as well as the entire city.
Good.
It's a real happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next communication item. You receive an update on the upcoming summer recreation and aquatics program. The information will be presented by Michael Beadle and Recreation Superintendent Deanna Ortiz, Recreation Coordinator, and Kristin Ennis, Recreation Coordinator. What a team. You're on.
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight to tell you about some of the outstanding programs we have coming up this summer. We're really excited. I have two of my coordinators here with me tonight. We have Kristin Figueroa, who's going to oversee our aquatics programming and is going to tell you a lot about our aquatics programming. And then we have Deanna Ortiz, who is going to run our summer recreation program. And then we also have Alexa Castro, who is our new pool manager. So we have our staff here tonight. I'm going to hit you with a couple of highlights, and they're really going to go into the details of the programs because they're really the ones that are there day-to-day and, you know, have a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of fun with the programs that we offer. So although we don't want to admit it right now because it's 70 degrees outside and beautiful, summer is coming. The heat is coming, and the good news about that is we do have a number of great ways to beat the heat this summer, starting with aquatics. So we have a full slate of aquatics programming, which we're really excited about. But just to give you a scope and context for the aquatics program, we had over 29,000 pool visits last summer. This amenity is used to death. The community loves this amenity over at Loma Linda, and will continue that this summer. We also had 93% of our swim lesson participants say that they would recommend this program to a friend. So we have great programs for a really excited community to kind of beat the heat this summer. Additionally, we have our special events. So we have our Fourth of July Spectacular over at the ballpark, which everybody loves. We had over 10,000 people out there last summer. And then we also have our Kids to Park Day program upcoming early in the summer, which I'll be back next month to tell you a little bit more about. From an amenity standpoint, we have our splash pad, which is over at Goodyear Community Park, and we love that amenity. That's just a great way to sting in the parks even though it's hot, but give the kids a good place to cool off during the summer. So that's another great amenity. And then finally, we have our summer recreation program. This is a hugely popular program, as you know, and thanks to your support, we are able to expand to a third site this summer, which we are really excited about, to continue to provide that opportunity for summer rec, for those participants. A highlight from our summer recreation program is 94% of our participants said that our program is above average or excellent, and that's just a great statistic, and it's a direct correlation of all the hard work that our coordinators put in every day. With all these programs in the summer, with our new fee and cost recovery program, we are keeping things affordable, so we do have our multi-child discount and also our youth scholarship program. So cost shouldn't be a deterrent to come out and join us for the summer. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Kristin Figueroa to talk about aquatics.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I talk about our aquatics programs, I do want to introduce Alexa Castro. She is going to be our pool manager this summer. She has actually been with Goodyear since she was seven. She started off as a swim team swimmer. She grew up in Goodyear. She went to Desert Thunder. Desert Star and Desert Thunder. She participated in our junior guard program, then became a lifeguard, taught swim lessons, was our assistant coach for two years, head coach for three years. So I was really excited when I saw her application for pool manager this year. Last May, she graduated from the University of Arizona with a biomedical engineering degree. So having her come back and lead the pool, we're very excited to have her this summer. So if you stop by and see her, say hi, she's going to do a really great job. Okay, moving on to our programs. So first of all, we have our open swim. That is offered seven days a week. We have ours starting in May, and Memorial Day weekend, we open. We go through Labor Day. Based on your feedback from the cost recovery, we are keeping our open swim rate at $1.50, which is extremely affordable. We do have other individual rates for a family pass and an individual rate pass for the entire summer as well. So you don't have to pay that every day, you just pay one rate. We do also offer swim lessons. Those start in May, and those are taught by American Red Cross Certified Lifeguards, Certified Instructors. Those start in May, they run through July. We have classes for infants of six months all the way up until adults. So we offer programs in the morning and in the evening. With those, they really are focused on water safety, drowning prevention, and obviously swim skills as well. Then we have our special events. So those are our Family Fun Nights. Those are monthly. We have movies, we have games, we have food for families to come out and just enjoy. Those are free. Same with our teen night. It's an opportunity for the teens to come out, enjoy the pool, swim, play some games, just have a good time. Our next is our fitness programs. We are offering Cardio Wave, which is a floating fitness program where you have floating boards that connect to our lane lines. You can do yoga, you can do high-intensity workouts, all kinds of stuff with those. So we also have that, and then our low-impact workout is our water aerobics program. Last is our Swim and Dive Team Program. This has been around for a very long time, really focuses on skill and stroke development. There's opportunities for swim meets and competition, but it is very introductory, recreation-based, learning the basic skills of swimming. So I'm going to turn it over to Deanna, and she can talk to you about the summer rec program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about our summer recreation program. There we are. So this summer, we are looking for an exciting time to share seven weeks of fun and keep the kids busy and very active this summer. We will have our two staple programs that we've had in the past, which is Copper Trails and Desert Thunder. And then our newest location will be at Centerra Mirage. So this will give us an opportunity to invite some more children to the program, and we participate in many activities. We're open Monday through Friday from 7:30 to 5:30. We do have some of those children that come for the full 10 hours. If not, some of the kids participate in a half-day program or just a couple of days a week. So we keep them busy through arts and crafts, special events, games, group games, very sports. We try to keep them as active as possible. We also have weekly themes where we have different guest speakers come in and keep the kids engaged, everything from a magician to riding a Valley Metro bus to the K-9 unit. So we try to give them as many experiences as possible. We also will be attending field trips. We do try to stay in Goodyear, so we will be participating at Elevate the Jump Trampoline Park, Estrella Falls, and the movies. So that's an opportunity for the kids to kind of get out of this site, have some fun, and then come back and enjoy with their friends. Registration will begin next Monday for all Goodyear residents, so we're looking forward to, you know, having a busy day at the rec office for those people to sign up their kids for the program. With the addition of the third site, we will be able to take an additional 160 participants. So I think that's going to be great. As you know, our program has typically filled in a week in the past, so that third site is really going to afford us the opportunity to expand the number of participants. We also, as I spoke earlier, we have weekly options available, so sometimes we get visitors that might come to the grandparents' house for a month, and they might sign them up for one of our programs for a week or two to just be able to engage with some other children and kind of keep them busy and active. Okay, next, I'd like to talk about our Junior Leader Program. So through the summer recreation program, our program is typically from first through eighth graders. So the Junior Leader Program is an opportunity for the kids that are too old for our program to being able to be helpers. So they apply for this program. They're typically between 14 and 16 years of age. They actually go through an interview process, and then, once they clear the process, they come on with us, and they actually help with day-to-day activities. So they help with the various group games, they help us clean, they help us, basically they're an assistant to the staff person. This affords them the opportunity to, when they do turn 16, to kind of jump to that next level and apply for employment. They're very familiar with our program because they've already been in it for many years. We also have a Junior Guard Program through the aquatics, which is what we talked about earlier, where Alexa started. So their training is actually from 12 to 14 years old, and they're able to do saves, they're able to teach them first aid, the cleaning, they're able to shadow the guards, as well as at the end of the program, kind of get that hands-on experience and actually sit next to the guard when they're actually sitting in the chair. So this is a great opportunity for somebody who's a swimmer to then go to our Junior Guard to then hopefully apply for employment as well. So thank you guys so much for your time. We look forward to sharing our statistics at the end of our summer and all of our successes.
So are you ready for questions or answers? Good. Thank you. Nice presentation. Alexis, welcome. In a new position this year. Congratulations. And congratulations from your attending college, or she's?
She graduated.
She graduated. Oh, make them young, don't they? I tell you. Okay, who would like to talk first? Yeah, Brandon?
Yeah. Thank you so much for putting all the hard work into these programs. I know a lot of parents that look forward to these programs every year, and I know that, I really appreciate you adding the extra, extra school because I know a lot of parents that they're telling each other, okay, you gotta, you have to sign up quick because these things go quick, so you got to be ready to go, hit it as soon as it opens up. So I appreciate you adding more, more space. And as a kid, I remember going to summer rec programs, too, so they're definitely good places to stay out of trouble and meet other people and stay active, like you said, in the summer. And I think utilizing the Loma Linda Pool is a great program, too. Helping our parents and our kids learn how to swim for life is definitely an important skill to develop in, right here in Goodyear. So I appreciate that as well, and I'm sure a lot of parents definitely appreciate it. So yeah, and also thank you for, it's really neat to see all the extra programs at the pool. Did you say there's a yoga class on a board?
Thank you.
Yeah, that's neat, too. I might be there, I don't know. Yeah. No, but yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
I just want to say thank you to all the staff and all the hard work. This is such a great program, and I know it does fill up really quickly because it's affordable, it's reasonable, it's fun, and it keeps them occupied. So thank you.
Councilmember Osborne?
You know, there's not much of a better feeling as a parent, knowing that your kids are in a good program, and that they feel they're safe and that they're having fun. And because it's summer, you know, they get bored, and so there's something for them to do. And as you said, Councilwoman Hampton, about swimming, we all know how important that is, especially in our state. And so, you know, I really appreciate everything that you guys are doing. What's kind of funny is I was watching this, thinking that I'm all done with this kind of stuff, right? Well, which probably don't know, is I have a three-year-old grandson who's been living with me for almost two years now, and he's ready for those swim lessons. So I may find myself having to drive back to Loma Linda, and I just, I don't know if I can handle that, but it will be, it will be good, and I'm glad you're there for that purpose. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I just want to thank you for opening an additional school, and you know my feelings. I'd like us to have five or six or seven schools open because people who use the ones that we have already pioneered on know the quality of the staff, they know the quality of the programs we offer, and they absolutely love it. So thank you so much because you're just opening it up for other residents, and we appreciate all that you do. We love the Loma Linda Pool, we love your rec programs. I may try the cardiac board. Is it cardiac or cori? Is it cardiac board?
Cardio.
Oh, can I just float? Perfect. I'll do it.
Councilmember Pizzella?
There's not a whole lot more to add to what's already been said, except I appreciate everything that you do, and also keeping the prices down for the pool for some of those families. I really appreciate you doing that. So again, thank you.
Councilmember Stip?
There is literally nothing left to say at the end, but thank you very much for everything. I know that recreation programs are very important to our residents, and I do want to give a shout-out to Kristin. Congratulations on being Kristin Figueroa.
Well, I can imagine how families feel and the kids feel, to think that you're going to take off a summertime and you've got something like this to do. You don't have to take them out of town, you don't have to spend a lot of money on them, and it's just a time where every age group, one would have them their family and take care of, and the junior leaders, that's brilliant. It's just the way. And having been, I say this every year, you know, Red Cross swimming instructor, really, really, most of my life, I know the importance of water safety. And we have a number of young people and adults that still do not know how to swim. So you're saving a lot of lives, and we appreciate it. Great program. All right, let's go to the last communication item. Council will receive an update from the staff on the El Rio Projects and a presentation from Kelly Wolf Crouter of the Arizona Game and Fish Department and Laurel Arnett of the Sonoran Institute regarding the Lower Gila River Story Map Project. Joe Schmidt, Long Range Planner, will introduce the speakers. Joe?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. As you noted, this is a two-parter. First, we're going to give you a brief update, I'm going to give you a brief update on some of the El Rio projects that we have programmed, and then we'll have a presentation from the folks from the Lower Gila River Restoration Collaborative to introduce that organization to you and do a demonstration of the story map project for the river. So to start with, we had a steering committee meeting of the El Rio Committee last month, and in that meeting, we did updates for all the projects from each of the entities that participate in the El Rio Memorandum of Understanding. And the mayor liked the presentation and said, you know, we should do this, we should update the council on this. So that's why I'm here tonight, to update you on these projects and likewise introduce the collaborative to you. So let me just run briefly through a couple of projects that we've been working on. This one is the El Rio Lake Project, and it's a joint planning project, as most of our projects are joint projects with other entities. This one's with Avondale Buckeye Irrigation District, the Flood Control District, and Maricopa County Parks Department. And the project would expand the BID Empowerment Lake that's at the confluence of the Agua Faria River and the Gila River, and it would provide a grade-controlled structure and water storage with 200 surface acres of water that could be used for active and passive recreation. The Flood Control District has been funding the design project, and the initial concepts that were developed were a single lake or multiple lakes, and the multiple lake scenario was decided to be preferred. And the county is now going to engage a consultant to develop 15% plans based on that concept. And shortly, we'll be bringing you an MOU for your approval so that we agree to participate in that project with no monetary commitment, only staff time to assist in the review of the project materials. The Rio Vista Trailhead is a project that would be at the northeast corner of Bullard Avenue and Vineyard across from the county park, and we've been designing this project in cooperation with the Flood Control District and the Parks Department. This project isn't in the current CIP for development as of yet because the trails that it would serve have not yet been fully developed, but it's time will come, and when it does, we'll have this project on the shelf and ready to be considered. The project would involve expanding the parking lot that's there currently that provides access to the previous project the county did for vegetation restoration, and it would expand it and then provide a Ramada and drinking fountain and informational kiosk and things of that nature that would serve people who would use that as a place to start on the trail. The Maricopa Trail Project, while it isn't specifically river-related, it does connect to the river, and the Parks Department, our to the river, and the Parks Department, our city Parks Department, has been working with the county Parks Department in roughing in the trail as it goes through Goodyear. It comes in at Perryville and goes along Yuma to the Bullard Wash, and then south back over to Estrella Parkway, and then down to Vineyard. And that's in its early stages of development, it doesn't yet have a fully-developed surface to it, but it's a start, and it'll continue to get better with every year. And then lastly, with respect to our projects, the brine management wetlands project is a joint project with the county Parks Department, that the Water Resources Division for the city has been working with them to develop a potential site for a brine management waste, well, not waste, wetland. And the idea is that from the potable treatment process, the reverse osmosis generates a lot of brine as part of the treatment process. You take it out of the potable water, but then you gotta do something with it. Currently, it goes into the sanitary sewer, but eventually, that can cause problems with the discharge from the reclamation plant. So the idea is to develop this project where the water, the brine would go through constructed wetlands, some of the TDS would be removed, some metals such as arsenic or selenium and nitrate nitrogen would be removed, and then that water would be blended with water and taken back to the river in a concentration that would be consistent with the current concentrations in the river. The water could also be used, once it's treated, to support irrigation of vegetation restoration projects, because sometimes it's hard to get the vegetation to reestablish once you put it in. And then I'm gonna touch, just for a couple of seconds, on some other projects that the county Flood Control District's doing. They're doing a salt cedar removal project at SR-85, where it crosses the river, just on the east side of the bridge, and this area is kind of a poster child for what's happened with the salt cedars growing in the river and causing water to back up and increase the floodplain. And so, this slide shows that before the salt cedar removal, the vegetation's very dense, and that inhibits the flow of floodwaters, and is what causes the waters to back up and flood more. And then you see, after the salt cedar removal, there's a lot less vegetation, but, thick vegetation, but there's vegetation at the ground level, so that the water can flow over it. So they're working on this area. The top slide shows the before condition, and the bottom slide shows the after. Obviously, it's not very pretty at the, when it's at its raw state, but it'll get better over time, and hopefully serve as a model for other projects in the river to address the salt cedar and its impact on flooding. And then lastly, in terms of Flood Control District projects, they are undertaking yet another new Lower Gila River Floodplain Delineation Study. You may recall that the last study they did increased the floodplain substantially, particularly in the Buckeye area. That red area was new floodplain as a result of that study. Obviously, a lot of the property owners in that area were concerned about the new delineation. But there's a recently-approved FEMA model that the Flood Control District can use, and they think that by redoing the delineation study, that it may actually adjust some of the floodplain boundaries, or at minimum, reduce the flood depths. So they're, once again, undertaking, so that project, you may hear more about it as time goes on. So that's the end of my portion of the presentation, and now what I'd like to do is ask Kelly Wolf Crowder from the Arizona Game and Fish Department, and Laurel Arnett of the Sonoran Institute to come forward and introduce the Lower Gila River Restoration Collaborative to you in the story map project.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here this evening and be on your packed agenda, right? Really, Joe gave kind of a great segue into the larger efforts going on, because everybody has their pieces. So Laurel and I are up here this evening to really discuss kind of the Lower Gila River, the whole Restoration Collaborative that's been forming. So as everyone in the room probably is already aware of, El Rio and the master plan was adopted in 2006. Ever since then, there's been lots of active things going on, as you can see, from Goodyear, from Buckeye, from Flood Control District, from Game and Fish Department, from BLM, all sorts of things going on on the river, as far as restoration efforts and tamarisk removal, along with, you know, obviously, the vegetation management replanting. And so, really, one of the things that came into play was that nobody was really talking about everything that was going on. There was tons of stuff going on, and everywhere you look, there's somebody doing something, but didn't we all need to come together? So that's how kind of the collaborative formed, was, hey, can we all get in a room and talk? Because we know there's lots of things going on, and we like to learn from each other, and we'd also like to make the best out of our efforts and make the most out of it, I guess you could say, by adding to it. You know, you're adjacent to this person, and maybe we can make this work and go across boundaries, be consistent down the river corridor. So really, many, many partners came together, many stakeholders, and you'll see another slide after this one that kind of contains some of them, but we continue to add to them. It's a very large collaborative at this point, and it keeps kind of growing. The vision was really to provide a collaborative cohesive-faced approach, and it's all dealing with the restoration of the river. The boundaries that we chose for this collaborative effort, being a landscape scale from the Trace Rios all the way down to Galetzby Dam, which does overlap with the El Rio, which is the 17-mile corridor over to 85. So this was really for restoration efforts, enhancement, maintenance, adaptive management of wildlife habitat, fuels reduction, recreation, et cetera. There's lots of benefits to restoration within this ecosystem. So really, the collaborative represents kind of a fostering proactive approach in coordination and collective action of stewardship of natural resources, along with cultural heritage, because we do have the Gila River Indian community folks involved, because you may know that they do a lot of basket weaving in their past history regarding with the willow, so they would like to see more willow, so they can get back to their culture as well, in addition to more cottonwoods. So there's some of the partners. Like I said, we continue to add more. And in addition to these folks up here, we've also added, most recently, the Rios Salado 2.0, so ASU and McCain's office. As you know, we have overlapping efforts there, dealing with the whole Trace Rios down to 85. This was initially just kind of our roadmap, and you can see the beetle picture in there, because the beetle's coming down the Haciampa. And so really, the key here was getting everybody together and doing this talking and figuring out what we were gonna do in order to be prepared for the beetle, and what we're gonna do after the beetle gets here. And so that's where some of our restoration strategies come in. So we began to kind of define issues and trends as a collaborative group, and we wanted to focus not only on the public safety issues, but also the ecosystem health and restoration of the river corridor itself. And it brought together just a massive amount of stakeholders, a diverse group of stakeholders. And really, these were just kind of the messages that we wanted to try to, I guess, outreach and educate about, that there are many, I'm not gonna read them all, because they're up there, you can read them, but as we all know, these are things that are happening along this river corridor, and we feel like the collaborative can take a landscape approach to be able to help with the strategies that we're gonna implement. We also developed kind of the beginning of a path forward. We all know that these things take money, they take a lot of support, they take a lot of education and outreach to the communities, and they also take a lot of planning. And a lot of this planning has already been done through El Rio, but we also need additional planning beyond that boundary. So there again, one reason why we're here tonight as well, is because we need everybody's support. And, you know, really, we've got lots of pilot projects going on, and we're learning from those projects, and we're hoping that with the efforts of the Rios Salado 2.0, and with our collaborative efforts, that we will be able to continue to apply for grant funding in order to be able to get some of this work done. I know it's very difficult to see, but we have a series of workshops within the collaborative. The first one was really, map one and two is really the east and west of the river, and we wanted to really put down all the projects that everybody was doing. And as you can see, there's an awful lot of projects on that map. And not bringing these people together, you never would've known that there were that many things going on. So it was really eye-opening for everybody at the table. To give you just one example, being on the game and fish side, on the other side of 85, of course, is Robins Bupa further out, is the Arlington Wildlife Area. And the Arizona Game and Fish Department is doing a whole bunch of work out there because of our In-Lu Fee Program. And this includes moving of ponds, tamarisk removal, planting and bank stabilization, so a lot of things that we were going to do as a collaborative with all these different entities that are already doing some of these other pilot projects that involve some of the same things. But one thing about this particular program, the In-Lu Fee Program, it's the department works with the Army Corps of Engineers to identify restoration project sites, and it's for the Clean Water Act and 404 permitting. And so when there's development or infrastructure that goes in, and they need to have mitigation because of the 404 permitting process, they're able to buy credits, and these credits are sold, and then go back to these restoration projects. So that's another big opportunity that I wanted you folks to be aware of, because we will continue to add into that program. So another step that we did after the initial mapping was to go in and actually figure out where there was some synergy within projects? Where do these things overlap, and where are these hotspots of activities going on along the river corridor? And so these are hand-drawn, as you can see, and really, this allows us to see where things are overlapping. Are they adjacent within proximity to each other? What kind of synergy is there? Are there things that are missing? Are there gaps that we can take a look at? It also contains some bubbles that represent critical areas of habitat, and, because we have TNI species on the river, of course. And so, here we go, here's the second map. And we also did some circles as far as the wet/dry mapping that's been involved along the river. So those areas that are mapped out as dry, most of the time, are mapped out as wet. The timeline's already been updated, it's a little behind on this slide, I apologize for that, but as you can see, we're pretty busy. A lot of our stuff focused this year mainly on outreach, hence why we're here this evening, and really putting together kind of the nuts and bolts of what everybody was doing on the ground, getting that map together that showed the projects, working on the story map, so that we can actually tell the story of what the collaborative is and what we're trying to accomplish. You know, why do people go to the river? What do they want to see? There's the background of the river, and we're gonna go into that in a little bit of detail. Laurel will be presenting that piece of it, which is way more fun than my piece. So, in any case, we also have been very active in grant proposals, and really forming as a collaborative, because as you know, these things take time, and we have to get our structure underneath us, and I think that's part of it as well, that we're really trying to put a structure to the collaborative. And in order to do so, we have to create a charter that's gonna have kind of the roles, responsibilities, how this shakes out between different committees and working groups and all that kind of stuff. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We're still in a little bit of the beginning, but we're still moving. I mean, we're still getting out there on the ground and doing those pilot projects and learning from them. I will let Laurel take over here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Laurel Arnett of the Sonoran Institute. So I do get the fun part, if I can get back to the right screen. So Kelly told you that we were doing a lot of outreach and a lot of information gathering, and the culmination of that is to put together this story map. I don't know how many of you already begin to see story maps, they seem to be showing up all over the place. Story map is a great online tool to kind of illustrate in various different ways information. And as Kelly said, we really realize that there's not only the outreach to the community that we're working in, and our partners to keep them up to date and let them know what we're doing, but ultimately, the success of this project is gonna lie with how we inform and educate people who live along the river. Not only just the jurisdictional and resource managers out there, but our citizens who come to the river, people who come to visit, people who may go online and come for birding activities, and all the sorts of things. We want to have an opportunity for them to look and learn more about the Gila River, and not just see it through one particular aspect, whether it's for birding, or we're dealing with a flooding issue, or we're talking about restoration for the tamarisk. There's a whole history behind it. So we had the opportunity to build this story map, and if you'll bear with me, because I'm always challenged when it comes to technology, I'm gonna walk you through it as easily and quickly as I can. So it starts with this really beautiful picture, and as you scroll through, like you do with most story maps, you begin to see a story about the Gila River. And it starts off with just some background information, some beautiful pictures of what you can expect to see down there. But then we really do begin to talk about the area history. So I'm gonna click through that a little bit more. A lot of people aren't really familiar. I think most people don't even know what Trace Rios really means, that there actually is three rivers that come together. And this is a great image to show this historic map that will really clearly tell you where the river comes from and how it's met by the Agua de Hacienda and the Salt. So a little bit more information, talking about the indigenous people that are there, another great image from our friends at Flood Control to talk about the Gila and its alignment that it used to have. And as you can see through the story map, there's more layers of information that you can delve on. I'm gonna go to the side here and run us through here, so we don't go through every single picture, that wasn't my intent, but to lead you through a nice conversation about the Hoacam. So this is not just for people who know the river and want to see what's going on, but for people who have really not an understanding of the background. It's a great tutorial for getting that and understanding where our heritage was from, and what really, who really occupied this river and this valley. So we go through there, and then we get to come to all the great information about the West Valley. Some great pictures and people, stories about Buckeye, the canals, I'm just gonna scroll through here, who started it, the history of Goodyear, and what, you know, what was here, and what was the driving force behind how this whole area got settled. So some great historical information, pictures of the dams, things of that nature. And then we have to get, of course, into the conversation about all the hydrological changes that took care of. We get in discussion about the floodplain. Up at the top there, you can see I'm clicking on these tabs, and each one of them tells a story about the river. So we have a section that really does talk about the floodplain, which of course, is really important, because a lot of people, given what's happening with the reassessment that's going on, everybody wonders what those impacts are gonna be. So we have some great information in that. I want to show you a comparative that was brought to me last week, that, you know, when we had a 100-year flood out here, we had flows of about 200 cubic feet. That's compared to Niagara Falls, which only has 80,000 on a daily basis. So you can begin to understand the enormity of those floods that we had, because you think Niagara Falls, oh my gosh, you know, you've been there, all that water, that's tremendous. And then you put it into context of what we had come through here, it really is quite amazing. So we have some relative stories about that, stories about the past flooding there, and there's some great historic pictures too, that people can look at and understand what we're faced with. Here's one from 1993, right over the bridge. One of the other things that I think is interesting here is a lot of people are wondering about the flood map revisions. I think this is an interesting map, because if you look at this red line here, which is the delineation that we're faced with right now from 2014-16, but look at the 1979 floodplain that was there, and the floodway, we're really not that far off from what was there. So it kind of puts into context some of the things that we're dealing with these days. We have some other information in there too. There's that 2016 floodplain, the 1995, and the floodway, interesting. And then some information about where we're at today in population and growth. We go through this whole section that kind of complements how this area is transitioning. Those red here represent agriculture, so all the red was agriculture in '84, here we are in 2017, so we're seeing that transition. Some dialogue to talk about what that means. We start getting into a conversation about the salt cedar, do some information and some learning about that. It's a really pretty plant, but we all know that it has a downside. So we have a section that talks about what salt cedar has meant to the Lower Gila River and its impacts, and I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail about that. Some of the pictures that you can expect to see if you go out to the Gila, discussions about how rampant it is, and then a little bit of education to the community about what salt cedar can mean as far as a public safety issue, and why we're actually moving towards issues of trying to restore and control what's going on. I think we have some great fire pictures in there still. Another map that really begins to show where the hazards are, all the red represents where we have high tamarisk areas. So people can get online and have a look at this sort of information. We also have a map in here that talks about where all the fires are. You can click on each one of these. I won't let it slow it down, I think we'll get one, we may. And each one of these will tell you about the fire of the year and some details about that. There's a story from Mayor Meck about the area too, his personal account, what's going on. And then we get a little bit more conversation about the flooding issues that Joe began to talk about, a little bit more detail. Love these historic pictures, so there is a picture from before the 1993 flood. You can actually see there's a fair amount there, then we have all this scour after the flood, there's the outline, and then now all the growth that's coming in. So that's what we're forced with, a lot of really dense overtake of some vegetation. And there's the flood. And there's the floodplain, a section on how to control it. You know, we're really beginning to get into these projects. And there's going to be, there's images on here that talk about the many methods to control salt cedar between fire and chemical and actual removal, biological treatment. I think we have a picture, one of these pictures in here is a masticator that actually goes on video. And you can turn it on and it just shows it just rip through and pull out the roots. And it's, I think somebody who lives in a farming community might enjoy seeing that. And then some discussion about the tamarisk beetle. We know it's coming. We want to poise ourselves. The collaborative wants to work to prepare the environment and prepare our communities for that because it's not the best answer. There is some downsides of it coming along. We have a lot of incredible habitat that support ecotourism down there. We want to make sure that as we find that balance between removing the tamarisk there, that we honor the environment that can be there and the benefits that it has to the community. So it's a really delicate balance to remove the rest, to remove the tamarisk, but then also set the site up to have more restoration. So one of our other tabs up here talks about that. We also go into a really full-on conversation. There's some nice pictures of where the beetle is distributed, and I'll let you guys play with that later. But you can see it's really rarely prevalent up in Colorado coming down the river. We think it's also coming from the east. And the little white dots, we, there haven't been any sightings on the Gila. There has been some on the upper Hacienda. So we're preparing for that because that's going to mean some impacts to our habitat there. Then we have a nice section on habitat to really educate people that even though the river is dry in many areas, it's an immense resource. Lots of large critters there. Everybody knows the birds are there. There's a section in here about the international birding area that we've acknowledged down there, some data in there. We've even had some bald eagles fledge down there in the last five years. I'm sure this is nothing new to many of you. Most importantly, there's three threatened and endangered or endangered species down there that we're very concerned about. So how we manage the tamarisk for a public safety issue is also balanced by how we can manage it to make sure we maintain that birding community and the habitat that's valuable and the people who are coming down there to enjoy that. So some more really cool pictures. Got a video recording in there. There's that whole area of the IBA. I think we have more information in there. National Audubon Society has this area very highly regarded, so more information about that. Then we talk further to what Kelly said about the wildlife viewing areas that are down there, which are such an asset to your community and the amount of habitat that's down there and critters, including, from what I understand, now we have wild pigs.
Those aren't ours.
Those aren't ours, though. We don't. So again, we, that mapping process, you know, when you begin to visualize what all is down there, what incredible resources and how many projects are being done down there, the time has really come on the Gila for it to be recognized as the resource that it is. And with the work that's going on the Rio Salado, it's just opportune time for us to really elevate the Gila River and recognize that it's such an amenity and asset that it is as we try to deal with some of these public safety issues and ecology issues. So more information on the restoration. Ultimately, we'd love to see more of this go on, more pole plantings and getting water so that we can make sure these restoration projects can move forward. So that ultimately is what we hope to find is cottonwoods and willows down there in addition to other low-lying native shrubs. We said there was a lot of projects on there. I know I'm coming to the end, but in this webs, in this story map, you can actually click on all of these dots that are in here and it'll tell you what the projects are. Around your area, Goodyear, there's an immense amount of activity going on between the projects that Joe referenced and some other projects that the City of Phoenix is doing on Trace Rios, trail projects, things that are going on in Australia's with county parks. It's just really timely to be recognizing all that's going on. And then we have some lists of resources for the public to look at if they want to delve any further. This is a site that is available, obviously, to the cities to begin to promote. We want to put active links on there. It's almost close where it's ready to launch off, and we would hope that it would be shared on all of the websites for the cities and all of our partners so people can become more informed about the work that we're doing on there and the story of the Gila River. So this time, if there are any questions.
Well, thank you so much. I know there's going to be questions, but what a great resource this is. Absolutely. So questions from the council? Councilman Hampton, did you have one?
No, I think it's a great, great, very in-depth website that we can hopefully share with other people. And yeah, I think the Gila is a great resource for the West Valley, and I'm looking forward to maximizing its use and protecting it and the ecosystem and just helping the river continue to be a great resource for the community. So thank you for your presentation.
Councilman Loretan.
And I want to echo that. I think it's very interesting and I think there's a lot of projects. I know it's going to take some time to get them all done. So this is a generational project, I would say, to rehab the whole river is, I think, what our citizens need to realize. It's not going to be done and water flowing tomorrow. So I think it's going to take a lot of work. And I'm really excited to see the different areas and see the water and actual usable water. My story didn't load on my iPad, so there's a link at the bottom of your presentation. Does that take me to the story?
Could you come back up the microphone? Thank you.
Yeah, because I couldn't get this to load, and I'd like to go back and look at it later. And I don't know if it's just the iPad it wouldn't load on or...
So we can go ahead and provide a link once this actually goes live. It's not live yet, so that's probably why it just disconnected at some point.
Okay.
We can, because it's kind of an internal thing. It's on a game and fish site at the moment. So, but we can for sure, as soon as we kick it out, we'll give everybody the address so they can access it.
Great, because you, I was looking through this and I'm like, wait, I want to see some more of that. So thank you very much.
Councilman Osborne, I know you must have something to say. This is right up your alley.
Yes. You know, this is so cool. And congratulations then that you recognize that so many groups are working on different areas of this and all collaborating together and saying, hey, look what we're all doing. That's fabulous. As Councilwoman Loretano said, this is generational. And we certainly wish it could happen tomorrow, but you know, that's okay. The fact that you're planning it and you recognize it, that's where it all begins. And a couple generations from now, when I have, my family's been here since the 1880s and will be on, you know, the eighth generation Arizona natives, they're going to be able to really, truly enjoy something like this. And I'm thrilled about that. So thank you for all the hard work. And yes, I care greatly about the critters that are around all of our cactus and the cottonwoods I'd love to see again. Thanks a lot.
On this side? Vice Mayor?
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. I'm looking forward to seeing your active link because we would like to look at it in depth. I know Joe has been working on this for many years. And we're excited to think that something is actually being coordinated to move it forward because it's such an important resource for this area. And we look forward to really having water down there where we have some activities and our residents can actually get to it and enjoy the outdoors. I know this is not something that's going to be done in the next five or 10 years because this is something that we'll be doing generations to come as we do it in peace and parcels. And yes, there are a lot of activities. I think getting the salt cedars out was the big deal, to really start the impetus going in thanks to Mayor Meck.
Yes.
And our mayor.
And the Corps of Engineers.
And the Corps of Engineers for bringing it to everyone's attention. Because those salt cedars suck all the water out of our ground. And besides that, they do stop the flooding. So it's important to get those areas clear, and it costs a lot of money to do that and a lot of time. So thank you for all you're doing. We wish you the very best. We're excited to be a partner with this, and I'm sure we're going to be hearing about this a lot in the years to come.
Anybody on the other end? You're right.
Well, it's just terrific. And it was so surprising that you, in the background of all this, you were still working on it. Because at one point, we stopped meeting. If you remember, I was on that committee. We met, I was a council member. And so I was just awestruck, the fact that you had been working on it all. And of course, we haven't even talked about Rio Salado. And I don't know if you realize that, but so all of this will connect to the Tempe Lake. It will come all the way around. And so you'll have parts of the river that won't have water in it. And, but cities will develop for recreational area where there'll be camping, there'll be areas of fishing. We have, I think, really a perfect, in our area because of the lake. I call it Jackie Meck's Lake, but we know it's not his lake. But the idea that you figured a way to divide it, divide the water to, so that we could have the restoration there, so you would have, I don't, how do you term that? One side of the water was, the citizens would be able to do, you know, row boating and small, yeah, and passive and active. And the other would preserve all the wildlife there. And so again, if you can make arrangements for council to see that lake, I would greatly appreciate it. I keep saying that because you will not believe it. You would just not believe it. You won't even think it's Arizona. So I'd like them to have that opportunity. So thank you for all your good work. Joe, thank you. And you know, you wish you could live longer just to be able to see each segment of it take place, but it is, it is a great project and it's nice to know that everybody's committed. And I think this will live. So, thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't really acknowledge the role of our partners of Flood Control and Game and Fish and a number of other people. Flood Control has been amazing helping us. Game and Fish has been such a resource. They, we have to thank for putting the story map together, so I just want to acknowledge them. And we're actually doing some more research work on the river, too, at Snorin Institute. So there is a lot for us all to do, and I really appreciate your support.
Well, thank you for the presentation. It's a great education for us all. Thank you. Any questions for Joe? All right, then Joe's on his way. Okay, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agend item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Is there any cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, then we're just going to go on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1 to 6.9? By title only, please.
6.1, approved draft minutes from a regular meeting held on February 26, 2018, and a special meeting and a regular meeting held on March 5, 2018. 6.2, approved the budget transfers for fiscal year 18. 6.3, adopt resolution number 2018-1859 approving and adopting a new city seal. 6.4, adopt resolution number 2018-1860, adopting the fiscal year 2021 city strategic plan. 6.5, approve the intergovernmental agreement amendment, generally in the form attached heretofore as exhibit number one, modifying the timeline for the completion of the Community Development Block Grant Waterline Project, authorizing the city attorney or his designee to approve non-substantive changes to the intergovernmental agreement amendment and authorizing the city manager to execute the final intergovernmental agreement amendment. 6.6, approve a one-year extension of the Avondale Moose Lodge Special Use Permit, extending the date to March 14, 2019. 6.7, adopt resolution number 2018-1861, promoting fair housing and recognizing April as Fair Housing Month. 6.8, accept the dedication of a public sidewalk utility and access easement from VHS of South Phoenix Incorporated, a Delaware corporation. And 6.9, approve a request from Nathan Torres, agent for the Goodyear Ballpark, for a temporary extension of premise patio permit for liquor license number 050-73027. The Goodyear Ballpark is located at 1933 South Ballpark Way, Goodyear, Arizona, generally located north of the northeast corner of Australia Parkway and Lower Buckeye Parkway.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from this consent agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item?
Mayor, I have a, I have a comment on 6.4.
Which one?
6 dot 4. Just a comment.
Did you say 6.4?
6.4, just a comment.
All right, 6.4. Can the staff come up and just address it or you want to take it?
Yeah, just have a general, just a comment.
Can somebody from the fiscal year city strategic? There, there we go.
Since I was on the phone the last time we did this. No, I just want to come in, not just Pam, because she's the leader of this thing, but everybody on staff. This strategic planning process has been long and arduous, but for the first time, we have a really good foundation to build future plans from, so we should be very happy for that. And I wanted to not only thank Pam, but literally everybody else sitting in the audience for their hard work and helping us come up with some good, smart goals and moving this process forward. So I just wanted to say thank you. Those were my comments.
Appreciate that, but appreciate that. And I think that's all our sentiments. Any other question? All right. Well, then, could I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second. All right. I heard a motion from Council Stip. And do I hear a second? Second from Vice Mayor Campbell. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborn?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries, 7-0.
All right, let's go to 7.1. And again, council, refrain from asking questions till the staff presentations are complete and there's a motion on the table. All right, the only item on business to consider is authorizing the statement of intent for the Rio Salado project. Joe's back up. Long-range planners to present. Joe?
Mayor and Council, a long time no see. I've got a slide presentation, but in interest of brevity, I'll go through it relatively quickly. Stop me if you have any specific questions. Otherwise, let's roll. So the Rio Salado project, most people think of the Rio Salado project as pretty much the project that's in Tempe, when in fact, the Rio Salado project extends farther than that project alone. And now there's been a new initiative by, initiated by Senator McCain's office and the Arizona State University to expand the limits of the Rio Salado project and reinject some life into the project and really promote it. The idea would be to expand it to the west to include the El Rio project, all the way just past State Road 85, and then also to the east to the Granite Reef Dam. Some of the guiding principles that are, been identified for the project are listed here. I won't bother to go through them, but I think you'll find them to be items that we all can appreciate. There's been a working group that's been formed of different stakeholders, mostly communities along the river corridor, to talk about critical issues. It's no surprise that funding sources and economic development and water resources and community are all top of the list. What's been discussed is trying to establish a river management framework with perhaps a river authority that would be made up of governmental entities, a revitalization corporation that would be more non-governmental organization, it would be more intrapreneurial, and then a Friends of the River type of river foundation. And these would be supportive of those, that concept with an advisory board, the project working group, and then a group of stakeholders. A committee resolution is being put forth in the Congress to support the Rio Salado project. And this would give the Army Corps of Engineers authority or access to funds to do an overview of the entire corridor and identify work that's been done and try to bring it together, similar to what the Lower Gila River Restoration Collaborative is doing, but yet a little bit different and over a larger scope. It also would open up the opportunity for the project to access federal resources through the Urban Waters Federal Partnership and Ambassador Program. And that's where the federal government identifies an ambassador to the project who in turn helps coordinate with the other federal agencies. So you're not working with individual federal agencies, you're working with a group of federal agencies. agencies. So, that's thought to be a positive step. The statement of intent document itself is comprised of a number of cities and the Indian communities as well, Maricopa County. What it says is, we express a shared vision for the Rio Salado project and that we agree to work together toward promoting the project. One of the ideas in the SOI is that what they would, entities would cooperate in forming a Rio Salado Authority to promote development of projects consistent with the goals for the river corridor. But it requires no monetary commitment other than staff time resulting from participating in the project at this point. Anything that would be developed along the lines of a river authority would obviously come back to the entities for formal review and adoption. So, this does not do that. It just says it's a concept that'll be explored. Rio Reimagined Public Launch Event is scheduled for March 30th this Friday and if you haven't received invitations, you all are welcome to attend it if you would like. The idea is to have a signing ceremony for the statement of intent documents, recognize federal engagement in the project by the Corps of Engineers. They'll view a project video and launch a project website and kind of get the ball rolling. So, like I said, if you haven't received a formal invitation, you're certainly all welcome to attend this Friday. And so, since this project involves so many different entities, as you well imagine, preparing the statement of intent was complicated by the fact that it was reviewed by everybody's attorney and trying to get 12 attorneys, no less, two attorneys to agree on something is sometimes difficult. So, I need to advise you that the formal, final version of the agreement may change somewhat. However, we expect them to be non-substantive changes. So, we are asking that if you consider a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the statement of intent, that it be subject to the condition that it may be modified with non-substantive changes. If there are any substantive changes, then we would obviously bring the agreement back to the council. So, that concludes my presentation and respectfully ask for you to consider the recommendation and approve the statement of intent.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, could I have a motion in a second to authorize the mayor to execute the statement of intent for the Rio Salado project as may be modified with the non-substantive changes? Do I hear motion?
So moved.
I didn't hear that. Was that Stip that said that?
No, it was Councilmember Hampton.
Oh, boy, was that low. I didn't even, that was a new voice I heard. All right, a motion from Councilman Hampton and who did the, and a second from Vice Mayor. Open for council discussion.
I have just a quick question. So, Joe, you said that all it requires is staff time. Does that mean you just have to go to meetings? I mean, it's not going to take a lot of your time?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Campbell, at this point, it would probably be me or some other staff members.
Could go. Good. Just so you don't have to do it all.
I don't think it'll be me alone.
Okay, good.
Any other questions over here? All right, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's go down to the information. Does council have any accommodations, reports on current events? Yes, Vice Mayor?
I would like to thank the paramedic crew that came to my house at 5:00 in the morning and transported me to the hospital. And I was so sick, I didn't know who they were, but it was Captain Sean, Engineer Cameron, firefighter Anthony, and firefighter Tom. And I thank them very much. They were, they did an extraordinary job with a very difficult patient, so thank you.
I can't believe that. Come on now.
No, I was so sick, I couldn't tell them what was wrong, so that was it. No, I wasn't, I wasn't, I was sick.
Well, we're, as a council, really relieved to see you back on the dais and glad that you're feeling better. Joe, go ahead.
Not for Wally to be outdone. I'd also like to thank them. I had gotten really sick really quick and they came and helped me out and they did an excellent job. So, and I don't remember where they were because I didn't remember what I was doing most of the time there. So, again, make sure you thank the crew. They did a great job. Thanks.
Yeah, be careful over there.
Oh, my goodness. Councilman Osborn?
Oh, thank you. Well, I just had a couple of things because I wasn't here last week and so, I did want to bring up that, you know, I appreciate when we had been in DC and had heard an update on Luke Air Force Base from some generals and some, just definitely higher-ups. And it was, it was very nice to hear a federal perspective of what was going on. And then I flew home and attended for the mayor, the Luque's Valley Council Quarterly. And so, then they went over what was, you know, going on locally right here with our base. And, you know, it was really great to hear the two perspectives and how important it is to our region and I'm very thankful for what goes on there. Unfortunately, I missed the Air Force Luke days because I then flew to Florida for a Thunderbirds wedding. And so, that was, was really exciting. And was also attended the NLC Fair Committee. One of the things that was very important that they discussed that we all know how it affects our city and that's the upcoming census and how important it is to every city in our nation. But, you know, they were really pushing for how the Census Bureau needs its money and its time to be able to put this together. And as we've done in the past, having to try to do our own census, you know, mid-census, we understand how important it is. I did have my annual meeting and I wanted to congratulate Pam and everyone who has been working on the Wellspring Park and the award that was received. Congratulations. And I have to tell you that today is my father's birthday, so I'm happy birthday, Dad. But also, this is kind of funny that it was March 26, 11 years ago, when it was my first night on council. So, tonight is my anniversary. But that night gets what the two huge topics were of the evening. We doubled our city because it was the annexation to Mobile 11 years ago tonight. And the big, big to-do, besides that little one, was that we had the BMX bike racers and the skateboarders all in the same room because there was this issue of the then skate park was the BMX skate park. And so, that was, it was a really fun evening, 11 years ago, March 26, in our Goodyear.
I remember vividly.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Norotano?
Yes, I think we talked about, mostly about the NLC last time. I don't remember. But I think the one thing that my biggest takeaway from that, from sitting at the committee meetings and everything is, wow, when you see like what we're doing with the Trace Rios and all the other projects, how our cities work together and then we go to the federal realm and you see how dysfunctional it is. So, I'm very proud of our mayor and our council that were able to work together. I wanted to give Nathan, Bruce, and the entire ballpark kudos. Everything, I stopped by at a few games, just absolutely their staff, the volunteers, just raving reviews from everybody. Everybody had a blast. The weather cooperated, so thank you very much. And I was not taken away by the paramedics.
And the flyover. They had a flyover, so.
Yeah, so, I wasn't, yeah, I stayed away from the paramedics today too, so that was good. I did see them in action though at the gym. Something I heard at the gym, I saw them in action. But, so, yeah, so I digress. So, I went to the Palm Alley Elementary School 20-year anniversary celebration, so that was pretty neat too, to see all the generations of people that have gone through there. And my kids really liked that. And then I also went to the opening day with the mayor and Sherry as well. So, that was good too, to see all the families coming out to, we're definitely a baseball town. There's a huge amount of baseball enthusiasts in our city and kids starting in T-ball all the way up. So, yeah, pretty clear to see, so. So, that was pretty fun. And then today, I went on an economic development tour with our city to see some of the latest things that are going on and a lot of, lot of good, good growth and, yeah, it's just a lot of good things happening here in Goodyear. It's a great time to be here and a lot of things that the council's been set up in the past that's now coming forward and set us up for success. So, it was good to see, good to see all the different, and I've seen it before, but it's just good to see the progress of those things happening day by day, so.
Exciting.
Yeah, it's exciting.
She just said, all right, you've got it. Go ahead. Did you have it? Put it in there.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Can I have one more thing? I apologize.
I said.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant, I totally forgot to say Happy Easter to everyone and Happy Passover and Good Friday. Thank you.
Anybody else have a report? Yes? Okay, well, I just want to, I do want to, the game was great and I know you probably have the number. That's a great, I can't wait to hear it. I do want to check about something. I went to the Desert Edge High School and now they're offering a conservatory program for students interested in pursuing a career in fine arts. And they're developing a 501(c)(3) so they can collect funds to run this and it was very impressive. And I really see when somebody talks about our schools, well, here's another program and they're working very hard on it. The students were there and they did a small venue of singing and a play that they're going to produce very soon. So, I just wanted to mention that. It was really great, so. Okay, so now I'm just going to turn it over to the city manager. So, you have a summary of actions or anything? Nobody asked you to do anything tonight from the dais, I don't think, so you're free on that one. Oh, oh, I did. That was his thing, wasn't it? All right, go ahead. You can report it.
You know, I, seven years, I'll get this straight once. But my question of staff is, the timing, light, traffic light timing on some of the side streets that enter onto the major streets, Litchfield, Bullard, Pebble Creek Parkway, Estrella as it goes down, there, it appears as though we have, we lack some consistency in how they are. And the example that I have is Bullard. The way the lights are timed at Earl is different than they are at the next intersection south, which is different than they are at Encanto, which is the next intersection south, which is different than they are at McDowell, which is different than they are, et cetera. Can we just get like a yellow paper or some sort of follow-up on how that all works and why that might be the way that it is?
You know, I did notice, early on, we had this problem and they coordinated and it was fine. And it's just recently, maybe the last month, it's back again. So, we've had this problem before, so obviously, whatever they did didn't stay too long, but I don't know if the repair, when they repair the lights or if they're working, you know, on the streets.
I don't know, just some sort of idea.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. What I'd be glad to do is, we can put together a yellow paper just reviewing the history to date, if there's any current issues, and we can send that out for your viewing.
Thanks.
Okay, great. All right.
All right, as far as just some general updates, as you mentioned, the final spring training game was played yesterday and I do have a few highlights, although you'll receive a full briefing at the April 23 council meeting. We did have a sellout on the final game of the season yesterday. It was 10,311 attendees. The average game per attendance was up 6% over 2017, although the overall season attendance was down because we had four less games. And so, I think, want to congratulate everyone on a successful season and I'm sure we'll look forward to receiving the full breakdown on April 23. A couple of other items, I did want to just repeat it already came up, but we have the building blocks to great schools tomorrow. We expect about 30 representatives from schools, districts, and other stakeholders and a few council members from our neighboring communities. We have the Residential Household Hazardous Waste Event coming up on March 31st and this is where residents of Avondale, Goodyear, and Tulson are invited to take part in a household hazardous waste event from 8 till 11. The items will be collected at the former Coldwater Park property and the location is 10 East Alicio C. Felix Way. And there is no charge, however, residents will be required to provide proof of residency such as a recent city utility bill or driver's license. And then last but not least, we wanted to highlight that we have the Muscle Kings Car Show and Concert, also this Saturday, March 31st, noon to 11:00 PM at the Goodyear Ballpark. There'll be hundreds of muscle cars on display. I understand our own mayor will be a judge at that event. Musical performances by 38 Special and other bands and family-friendly area with an Easter egg hunt. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. All right, is there anything, council, any inquiries that you all? All right, well, that's just great. The next meeting will be a work session on April 2nd at 5:00 and a special meeting at 6:00. So, no further business, this meeting's adjourned. Yeah, you just give me a moment, okay?